Y'all made it through the snow.
Okay, now go ahead.
Good morning, welcome to Iron County Commission Meeting of the 11th day of February 2019. Again, glad you made it through the snow. I was out last night at midnight and it was just the county roads were just waves of snow. There was no real, hardly delineation. So, quite a storm, we're glad for the moisture. Ah, okay. Jared, could we get you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And Chad, would you offer a prayer invocation for today?
Now please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee this time. We give thee thanks for this beautiful day, for the moisture that thou has provided for us. We are grateful for it. We are grateful for the peaceful circumstances in which we meet today. And we ask that thou would bless us as we discuss the issues of the county, as we discuss the best way to to serve the people of our our community here. We are grateful for this land and for the many blessings that we have. And we, again, are grateful for this opportunity to to serve and to meet. And we say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, thank you both very much. Well, you can stay up here Chad if you want. Well, we'll approve the minutes first. We have the minutes of January twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen. I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the minutes of January, what date?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, we approve the Iron County Commission Meeting Minutes of January twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all, uh, motion carries, thank you.
I think there's just, is there a resolution on there?
That, thank you. Okay, well first here, a report from our attorney. Chad, how are you?
Good, how are you all?
Good.
Thanks for having me. I I thought that I would, uh, I know you've seen these statistics reports before, so I've made some copies. I updated the final numbers from two thousand eighteen.
I failed to mention, this is your first report to the commission.
We'll see how it goes. So, at the end of two thousand eighteen, we had a, we had a few record numbers. The Narcotics Task Force, again, had a record year. We filed on more cases than ever in two thousand eighteen. Two thousand seventeen was the previous record year, hundred forty seven, two thousand seventeen, hundred fifty-two cases.
While you're there, how does that tie into the opioid epidemic?
I think it just, again, shows that we have a, we have a drug issue in the county. It doesn't look like it's, it's slowing down at all. And we haven't dived into the numbers necessarily as far as opioid cases. We do see a lot of methamphetamine in Iron County, but there has been an increase in heroin and oxycodone-related possession charges, as well as distribution cases. Um, tying into that, in two thousand eighteen, we filed on the most felony drug-related cases, two hundred eighty-eight felony drug cases. We had also, unfortunately, in two thousand eighteen, the most child sex abuse cases, twenty-five. That's a record number, two thousand eighteen. And we were fairly close from topping the record number felony cases overall, two thousand eighteen. So, I don't know how, how many trends or, or things we can, we can go from. In the last two years, we have seen an increase, but we'll continue to monitor that and see where those trends, where those trends go. So far, in two thousand nineteen, we filed on over a hundred cases in the district court, and one of those was an attempted homicide out of Enix a couple of weeks ago. Um, I had the, the chance to go on scene and, and view the, the crime scene. The sheriff's office did help process the scene, which was a good help to Enix City. They're limited resources, so it was a good joint effort there. So, we're on the very early stages of working that case. But that's kind of how we're, we're going so far in the criminal world and how we looked from two thousand eighteen. Touching on the opioid litigation, so there's been a motion to consolidate all of the statewide cases. Um, they're looking to consolidate it, the defendants in the case, the manufacturers in Salt Lake. And so, February twenty-second, there's a hearing to decide whether or not they will consolidate those cases. Our side, we've objected. Um, and they'll make that decision next week. And so, we'll have a little bit more information after the February twenty-second hearing. So, we'll look forward to, to seeing what happens in that case.
I have a quick question about that one Chad. If, so if it consolidates, where does it move us?
It looks like everything will be in Salt Lake. And as far as how that shakes out, as far as what our involvement will be, um, I'll have to get some more information. I don't know where that leaves us necessarily.
Still in state court. It's not in federal court at this point. So, it's consolidated all in one state court action right now.
Okay, that was.
Is that where you?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was getting excited, because early on, there were talks that it would probably all get consolidated to federal court. But this is consolidation to state.
And this is deciding the state, the state issue. So, these are all the, the state cases.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, last year, the budget, as you guys probably know, we came under budget as a, as an office, which is always a good thing. So, we'll continue to, to make that a goal. Um, do you guys have any questions? Anything that you guys would like to know? Okay.
Not really.
Well, hopefully I hit all the, the high points, but we're fully staffed now. We hired our new attorney. He started a couple of weeks ago. So, we're looking forward to, to being fully staffed and, and moving forward as an office.
What's his name again?
Samuel Woodall. He, uh, he was in private practice in South Dakota. And now, he's, he's coming back home to Utah, so glad to have him aboard.
Very good.
All right. Thank you very much.
So much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Stephanie, glad to have you here. I'll give you the floor now.
Um, let's see. Um, New Year, um, we're getting ready to actually apply for the next round of the VOKA funding that takes care of my therapists, as well as my victim advocates in the center. Um, that application has to be submitted by the twelfth of April. That's a two-year grant. That's the one that we have a little bit over five hundred thousand that we receive, um, in federal funds, which is nice. Um, one of the things that I'll also be applying for, in addition to what I already have with that particular grant, is we're finding that with adding three therapists on, um, in the Children's Justice Center, and, you know, we've got two here in Iron County, um, one in Kane County, that with those additional federal grants comes heightened amount of reports, case management, tracking of services. Um, and so, I've asked the girls to keep track of like how many hours that they think that they're putting in to, uh, putting all of this information into the case management system that they require from us. And it's coming in between twenty to twenty-five hours a week. And so, it's, um, put quite a bit of extra work, um, on them. And so, I contacted VOKA, you know, regarding, uh, those particular reports that they have us do. And they had said that we weren't the only agency. They had contacted them to make them aware of all of the extra work. They, I mean, with extra money comes in, extra work, tracking of services, um, that are being provided. And so, what they had suggested to me, that they had told other agencies, is to actually apply for some funding for a part-time position of an individual who would, that would be their sole responsibility, is literally to take those intakes of all the services we're providing to families and children, put it into the case management system, track all of those services as well. And so, that's something that I plan on applying for. Luckily, we've, um, had, the Levitt Business Center has been giving us an intern for the last year and a half. They're providing an intern for us. And that's been about twenty hours a week. And we are extremely grateful, you know, for that, because they're actually, it's a paid intern. Um, the issue comes in that we only get them for a semester. And so, they come in, we train them, you know, um, assist, the case management system isn't a super friendly, um, case management system. Um, it's collecting information for the state that we need to provide information to. Um, VOKA, VOKA actually has like three different online things that we have to go into in order to take care of, and then also the National Children's Alliance. And so, you know, we end up training that student, um, working with them. And then, before we know it, they're gone. And then, we have a new one that comes in and we have to train them, and then they're gone. And so, we just feel like it would be a lot better if we could get a part-time person, who that would be their entire job. Um, Canyon Creek Women's Crisis Center actually already has one that's hired, and they were gracious enough to, to share with me their job description and kind of what they do and, and how they're doing it. And so, I'll, I'll be able to submit that. So, um, that's what I'm looking at adding on, is just a part-time person to do that. But also looking for a new therapist as well. Um, Tori Topham is at Canyon View Middle School. She's thirty-five hours a week. She is completely maxed out, um, with taking care of our, our, our victims and their families. Uh, Natalie Townsend is here in Perwin, um, and she is between fifteen to twenty hours a week, because she has her own private practice as well. Um, I actually have a meeting tomorrow with Roy, who is the principal at Perwin, because she covers, not only, she covers the high school, the middle school, and they're wanting her to go over to the elementary school as well. Um, and she just is, just has not enough time, you know, in order to take care of all those needs. And so, one of the things that we've talked about is hiring an additional therapist. Um, and we would want that therapist to be trained in working with the younger children. Um, Tori and Natalie are more kind of middle school, high school age kids. But for our little five, six, seven-year-old kiddos, we're having a really hard time. And so, we're looking at hiring a child therapist on for this next, um, grant, which would start July one. So, just kind of a little heads up on that. That's something additional that we're looking at, you know, bringing to the Children's Justice Center. Um, as well as, I just recently attended a child abuse conference in San Diego. One of the things that we're looking at is tele-mental health, um, because what we're finding out is in our rural areas. So, you know, I'm over Iron Beaver and Kane. I'm getting ready to head into Garfield County as the last, um, satellite area that the Attorney General's Office would like me to, to go into. And what's nice is I actually have Garfield County calling me and saying, "We're ready. We're ready for, uh, uh, CJC, um, for our families." But that they have a strong need for, um, mental health therapists for their victims over there as well. Um, the last nine months, I've been working with the school district over there. We cannot get anybody to go out there, unfortunately, to those areas. And they don't have anybody that I can even contract with, um, that I could even pay to provide the services. And so, we're kind of having to think outside the box. And, and what's nice is I've been part of a rural mental health, um, project with, um, the Western Region Children's Advocacy Center and figuring out how are we going to provide these services? Because kids in Garfield County, Iron Beaver, Kane deserve the exact same services that kids in Salt Lake County get. And that's something that we're pretty passionate about. And so, um, they had, the University of South Carolina has actually been doing a pilot project for the last year. Um, and they were able to present on that. And out of fifteen hundred kids, um, what tele-mental health is, is just simply you can have a mental health provider anywhere in the state. And they, um, it's kind of like FaceTiming over the computer, just, um, so they can just talk to them over the computer. Um, these kiddos, it's got a split screen, so they can present any type of material to them. They can play games with them. They can do, you know, different things. Um, and of the fifteen hundred children that, uh, this University of South Carolina had done this pilot project with, eighty-four percent of them completed their mental health training, which is absolutely phenomenal, because even in person-to-person mental health, it's not even anywhere near that high. It's in the forties. Um, and then in regards to parent satisfaction, it was one hundred percent. Out of fifteen hundred kids, one hundred percent parent satisfaction in regards to how they felt that that tele-health, um, mental health had, you know, provided services to their family. And so, it's something that we're definitely going to be looking at, especially for like Beaver County. Um, we've got, you know, um, Southwest Behavior Health there, but they're pretty tapped out and maxed out. Um, and so, we would be able to provide that mental health at the CJC. It would just be set up with kind of like a real soft room area with a computer. The kids can come in, just like if they had a regular counseling session with somebody, and to be able to work, um, you know, to work with their therapist that way. Um, we're actually partnering, looking at partnering, um, the gentleman who's in charge of Safe and Healthy Families Mental Health Program, which is Dr. Brooks Keishen. Um, he's going to be working with us. And so, it'll be a pilot project that's a partnership between our CJC, um, the Attorney General's Office, and Primary Children's Safe and Healthy Families. And so, we're pretty excited about bringing that to our rural communities, you know, in this area. Um, so, does anyone have any questions in regards to that?
No, I don't. We talk enough that I.
Yeah, we talk enough. You know what's going on.
Well, we appreciate all that's happening. So, Garfield County, for example, uh, where are the, where have their cases been going?
They haven't, um, really been going anywhere, except for just having the officers, you know, either talk to them at the police department or in their homes, which we know isn't ideal. What is nice is that, um, their new prosecutor is Ann Marie Allen. And she's from Iron County, and she worked in our prosecutor's office. And she's very, very familiar with the Children's Justice Center. And she actually had, um, reached out to us, what, a couple of months ago? That was probably a couple of months ago.
Yeah, maybe that long.
Couple of months ago, um, in regards to, um, a case that she needed somebody to do a forensic interview on. And, um, unfortunately, I mean, most of the, I mean, all of the deputies within their community, they've had the training, but it's been like seven years. It's been a really long time. And now that she's the prosecutor there, she, um, you know, is, is encouraging that every child abuse case be done by a forensic interviewer, that it be done in a Children's Justice Center. And so, she actually had them come over to our CJC, um, and we had actually asked Mike to come in, because he was available in order to do the interview. Um, what was nice about that situation is the parents were pretty reluctant in the beginning. They were, they were not happy at all. But by the time that they left, they were extremely happy and were, you know, singing our law enforcement. And, and, and Mike praises in regards to, you know, how much better they felt about the situation. And so, that was a really nice win-win. And so, um, we're pretty excited to get out there. Ann Marie says that she'll, you know, help us in regards to finding, um, a place. Because we just, we probably won't have a standalone building unless somebody donates it. We're thinking more, you know, something a little bit more smaller. But that's a soft room where they can still receive the services that they need. And then, my victim advocate, who is in Beaver County, rather than hire a new person to go over to Garfield County to handle any of those cases, she would just go over to Garfield County, drive over there and meet with the families and the officers.
She's just part-time at this point?
She is. She's part-time right now. She's twenty hours a week. And so, we're looking at bumping her up to thirty-two hours a week. Um, and then she can go ahead and, and provide that services for that Beaver-Garfield County area there, so.
Excellent.
And what's nice is, um, I can, I can ask for that, those increase of her hours. I can ask for that in the VOKA funding as well, as well as her benefit package. So, that's nice. Um, let's see, what else? I, I feel like our needs are being met, um, at the center. I don't feel like we, you know, have any, anything that's not being met right now, which is always really good to say, knock on wood, right?
Let us know if you have these. I know your friends board does tremendous amount and donations from the public.
Getting ready to, to gear up again. I've already had Scott Phillips call me and say, "Hey, we need to get a meeting going for our next Dancing With the Stars event," which was phenomenal. Um, I also wanted to make you aware that, uh, the Children's Justice Center was selected as the CEO of the Year um, by the Cedar City Chamber of Commerce. And so, we received that, um, award. Very grateful, very humbled by that, um, without the support of our commissioners, as well as, you know, the, some more support of our county and our amazing community that is extremely generous in taking care of children and families. You know, there is absolutely no way that we can provide the services that we currently do. So, just wanted to thank you for that.
Congratulations for that. Thank, that's great.
Great. Any other questions at all?
No, thank you for making our lives easy.
Making the lives of these children better.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, and thanks so much for, I mean, these other counties had nothing, and now we have all four counties being represented.
And they're doing well.
That's amazing.
And thriving, and so, it's nice to see that.
Yeah, it is. What a marvelous program. Thanks so much. Hey, Lori, good morning. How are you this fine day?
I'm good.
Good morning.
Probably going to be pretty quick. Um, the first sheet you see there is the budget. And to the best of our knowledge and understanding, that'll be the way we end two thousand and eighteen. So, we were slightly under budget. Do you have any questions? We're good there?
Looks good.
Um, staffing, we remain consistently staffed. The justice court, everything's running smooth. It was, you know, obviously still the judges, full-time, part-time, uh, itself. And then, we've got the lead clerk supervisor and six full-time clerks. And right now, it's just perfect staffing for our workload. So, everything's running smooth. Um, the next report that's there is the justice court monthly. And what I did was I ran it for the entire year. So, even though it's a monthly report, I ran it for the parameters of the, of the twelve months. And I'd like you to see that, because over here on the, uh, far left, you'll see the total charges that are filed. And I would say, I think we're right around ten thousand. And that includes infractions, misdemeanor Cs, misdemeanor Bs. And as you move to the, to the right, you can see, you know, bail forfeiture basically is, uh, those are a lot of your, uh, traffic citations where they're, they're paid and, and closed. You know, your guilty pleas, things that were probably bench trial convictions. Uh, I think we had, I, I, don't quote me, but I think two jury trials last year that, that actually went to trial. Most, most of our jury trials end up getting, uh, worked out prior. Uh, the dismissals, a lot of dismissals. And this coming year, what we're going to see is a, a hike in, uh, citations that we'll receive from UHP. So, with the safety violations going away, uh, no long, not, they're not going away, let me apologize. We're not having to do safety inspections. So, now, UHP's kind of taking on that role of doing, uh, monitoring the violations, equipment violations. So, uh, I think I sent you over the weekend for January, if it, if you, you may not have had a chance to see it yet, but, uh, UHP citations are way up. And that's because they are taking on this role. Um, they've got one trooper, Shears, that's, uh, monitoring that. And that's kind of a separate thing altogether than the citations. And they could probably speak to it better. They came in and talked to us. So, they're going to start sending five-day letters. They actually have been doing that for the last two or three months. So, uh, an individual gets cited for equipment violations, and they're kind of keeping track of that. Because you'll have a lot of individuals that'll, uh, they'll go fix their tires or take their tent off. And, and then all of a sudden, they'll be before the trooper again, because after they go get all those charges dismissed, then they put all that stuff right back on. Anyway, they're going to keep track of that. And, uh, with multiple offenses and them keeping track, they're going to probably find that their, uh, registration will end up being suspended on their vehicles. And that, again, is not some, not a role that the justice court's playing. That's something they're doing now to monitor and keep track of the fact that we're not having, uh, the safety inspections anymore. Uh, so, a lot of those dismissals would, would be that, some of that's, uh, cases that are going over to Fifth District. Um, you know, if there's, you know, second or, you know, second offenses, that sort of thing. Um, so, that's a pretty interesting report and gives you an idea of the caseload. Uh, the last few pages just shows the total revenues, you know, collected, what goes. And I remember, last time I showed this report, uh, then Commissioner Brinkerhoff, at the time, wanted to know about the waived charges. That's a very last figure on the final page. And so, when we talked to Corus, uh, they let us know that those items, uh, are items that would go to the state. And, and, and what I thought that, that accounted for that figure is correct. From the past and the transition from Cassell to Ncode to Corus, we have a lot of cases that appeared to transfer open. Some of them were, were closed and paid in Ncode or, you know, and, and so, we've got these dismissed cases that may not be totally reflective of something that was dismissed, but this is how we're cleaning that up. So, you'll see that final figure. And that's what accounts for what appears to be a lot of waived, uh, surcharges. Um, any questions? Uh, just a, a heads up to, to the commission. Um, you know, we've got a lot of cases that need to be reviewed. Uh, we've got a clerk that helps us review that, one of our more experienced clerks. And over the course of time, what we've come to realize is a lot of inconsistencies from our supervised probationers. And, uh, I think I gave you a heads up, Commissioner Cousins. So, we got an opinion from the AOC, Brent Johnson, who's the chief leader counsel. And we were able to put out a letter of interest to the four different private probationers that were on a shortlist. And in defendants, used to be able to just choose, uh, who they were going to go to. They would be ordered to supervise probation during a sentencing or a judgment, and then they'd go pick. Well, what we've found is just a lot of inconsistency and a lot of defendants not following through on that. So, we, uh, asked the four probationer, private probationers that we deal with to submit letters of interest, because we would like to have, we, and we did choose one, to work with exclusively. And, uh, through that process, we ended up choosing PPS, which is Professional Probation Services. You know, it was imperative that they have an office here in Cedar. They do. They opened up next to Enterprise Rental Car in that shopping mall. And, uh, we really believe that, uh, that they're going to help us do a good job of keeping more on track and keeping the defendants, you know, moving through the process and doing those items that they're ordered to do through probation. So, just an FYI, uh, about that. We just continue to work on cleaning up projects. We're proud of, of how far we've come in the last four years. And, uh, and it's just a lot, it's just a smooth-running operation. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Good?
I'm good, thank you.
Thanks so much. Glad things are going so well.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Jared, welcome this morning.
Let's see if John can help me out a little bit.
Oh, yes, sir.
Otherwise, the top of my head's not going to work too well. I didn't place any kind of a budget sheet for you guys to review or anything like that, um, with it being sorted in the first of the year. There wasn't really much to report on. And then, last year, it looks like we came under budget, so, so I didn't put one in there on that. But, you know, any questions, I'm happy to follow up on them and get back to you guys. One, one thing you'll notice, and for Commissioner Cousins, this will be a good one for you, but you'll notice in the first part of the year that my budget will be spent a lot on software maintenance. So, it'll look like the percentage is out of whack, but kind of the end of the year, it works its way out, so. Just for a heads up on it, so. But as far as, um, goes, uh, we, I went through, I did some totals on, on our workload. Um, these are work orders that we completed throughout the twenty eighteen year, uh, three thousand four hundred and fifty-seven work orders that we did complete. That doesn't count our projects. That's just work orders that come in and troubles, stuff that happens. And then, the everyday kind of day-to-day tasks, it doesn't include that as well. So, we're, we're staying really busy, which is always good. Busy is, busy makes the day go faster, so. Um, as far as projects that we completed is, uh, just going through those, we got Ncode, utility billing and accounts receivable onto the system and, and working. We still got to tie up one last thing with Dan, with the accounts receivable, but we'll get that done here in just the next month or so. Uh, we've upgraded servers, Eagle Ncode and, and our Mytell now, it was Shoretell, our phone server. Those are all upgraded. And we did a lot of networking infrastructure as well with routers and switches. So, we've started a progress, a process too, where we implemented one cluster server. A cluster server just allows for a lot of different, um, software to be put onto one server. And then, we purchased another one this year that just arrived. And we'll start the installation of a second one. And we'll put them in the two different buildings, and then we can replicate them back and forth. So, if one goes down, we can spin it up in the other building and.
So, that gives us our backups. So, we don't have to do off-site backups. That, that takes care of it. So, we have redundancy in the two buildings?
Yeah, except for I'm paranoid enough that I still do off-site backups.
Do you? Who do you use for that?
So, right now, we're using the, um, Amazon. So, we, we do the backups in a lot of different ways. So, once this gets initialized, we'll have a backup here at the courthouse, a backup at the sheriff's office. And then, I do a hard backup that I'll keep on-site for quick recovery. And then, we'll push to the cloud as well. So, we've got essentially three to four different backups sitting out there.
What does that cost us to, to store that on Amazon a year?
The Amazon is about, it's about six hundred dollars a month, so seventy-two hundred a year.
Okay.
So, and then it depends, you know, if we run into a situation where we have major failure and we. failure and we have to start pulling, then that price can go up as we, because they charge us per gig as we download to recover.
Oh, okay.
So, as long as we don't have to do that, then it stays pretty cheap.
Okay.
So, but, and that's the other reason to keep it onsite too. So, now, we've got that one as a safety backup, and it's real cheap to send up there, and then, yeah, and then we can just replicate from the other one and be off and running. So, we're, I'm really excited about it. It's, it's pretty neat technology. It's gotten to where we can afford it and utilize it real well, so.
Awesome.
And then the Tyler Content Manager, we've got that installed. That's just a management tool for ENCODE and, so, does all that. Scroll down a little bit for me, John. We got, do you have any other questions on those projects that we've? These are kind of the ones that we've earmarked, and I left one off, I just barely thought of it, because Cindy and I were texting. But the one that I left off was we're working on a personal property piece as well for her office. So, we'll be able to get it done online and, and we might have a little bit of a snag, but hopefully we'll, we'll get that up and going. But that's a project that we've got going for this year. And we're gonna do a major update to the exhibits software this year. Dave's working on that one currently for the fair. We need to do it just so we can have a better record account, accountability and that for monies coming in and out for the exhibits. And then also to submit stuff to Balquer, State Wards, things and that, so we can get people in those. We're working on the MCAD, I think most of you are aware of that one, with the gentleman down there in Bart down in St. George. So, that's what the, mostly to do with the fire department, so. And then the Color Country Trail System, Ken's been working, working on that one, kind of got a few things into place last year, and that'll continue to grow, and we'll just continue to run with that this year as well. So, then I talked about the cluster. We got the time entry and scheduling software that we're gonna start. Got everything kind of signed and in place. We're just working on setting up times for this year now to get that implemented. So, and that'll be, that'll be really neat. Everybody will be able to submit time through the computer instead of paper. And then also for the Sheriff's Office and Jail and anybody else that can really use it, has a scheduling software to schedule it.
Do they do that through their cellphone, or is it gotta be strictly on a...
No, it'd have to be on a county computer, or, yeah, it'd have to be through that, so it stays networked.
That's really nice.
Yeah. We're implementing some more security cameras. We're gonna put them in place here at the courthouse, also with the visitor center. And then there's a few at the jail that are just getting outdated that we'll replace, but, but those will be another project for us. And then the GIS, which we'll touch on a little later more this afternoon. And then the new attorney software. We haven't really heard exactly when it's coming, but Chad and I have talked about it, and we think it's coming this year. And it sounds like it's, it was a really good thing to hold off. I think Scott did a really good job for us that way to hold off onto it, because now the state's bought into it, so it's gonna cost us as the county a lot less with the state being able to negotiate the, the deal with them. So, hopefully that'll all come online this year. We're hopeful, and, and all the news coming back says it will, so, which we do need to update and replace their system, so.
So, what are the highlights of that? What, what will be better about that than what we've had?
It's, I think Chad might be able to speak more to, to the everyday part of it. As far as my side goes, is maintaining it and all that, managing it, it's just an easier software to manage, manage. It'll be one that we can go, this, this old software, it was kind of more Ron White. He just kind of did everything with it. So, we didn't, we weren't able to manage it as much. And so, from my end, it'll do that. But from my understanding, the new software has a lot more bells and whistles to it, so that they can ma, maintain their management and everything of the software and see the whole case through. Do you want to speak more on it? Because I...
Well, just a few things. One of the things we're kind of excited about is that we're gonna hope to go paperless. This new software's gonna allow us to have a lot of our documents online. So, we're gonna have to log over all those boxes full of case files. So, that'll be a big plus. And then just a lot of different ways to track cases. So, our reports will be a lot more detailed. In terms of some PMS, it's not as intuitive as far as tracking case type. So, there's gonna be a lot of...
Thank you. Excellent.
Any, any other questions on it?
What about our overall security? I know we always worry about being hacked and so on. What, what do you, what, what do you do on a daily basis, a monthly basis to...
So, yeah, we're watching the security daily. So, we've got different firewalls in place. We've got multiple ones, and then we also do some, we do a lot of geo-blocking and all that kind of stuff. I can go into a lot of detail on a lot of the stuff we do, but I personally take a look at it every single day when I come into the office. I'll just go through, and I'll just see what traffic's coming in and out on our port. So, with the geo-blocking, that helps a lot, because we can block regions. So, anything, you know, Asia's really bad.
Yeah.
Europe's actually really bad, too. You get a lot of, a lot of malware stuff and people trying to hack you from those regions. So, we just flat-out block them. So, once the traffic comes, doesn't even get past our router, so. But, you know, there's ways around it, so we just have to keep an eye on it and keep watching it.
Yeah.
We've got about three, four different pieces of software that I'll check each day and monitor that. And then also, the state of Utah's really good. They've got a, it's a board called CYAC. And I'm on, myself and Josh and Ron, we're all on part of that. So, we get emails from them that show kind of the cyber activity that's going on out there. So, we'll look at that and read through those. So, for, for what we're doing, I feel pretty comfortable with it, but you know how hackers are and security goes, you never know. We do the best we can and hope that nothing ever happens, so.
Alrighty, thanks so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul from Central Iron County Water Conservancy got called to the legislature this morning, so he won't be here.
Commissioner, I could fill you in a little bit.
If you would, please, Commissioner.
Yes, please. So, where they're at right now, and that's why Paul's in Salt Lake, is he's testifying, I think it's for the Natural Resources Committee. They're trying to get some funding to help us with our environmental impact study for the West Desert. So, that's the next step. I believe they finalized a deal with SITLA to buy a section of land out in Pine Valley for a solar farm to eventually run pumps to power those. But the...
Well, you're on that one. So, were they able to get an amenable agreement with the permittee there, the grazing permittee?
Yes, yeah, that seemed to work out. They went over and had a meeting with them, and it seemed to work out good.
Good.
The, and then, but the environmental impact, I think that's gonna be about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And they're, they're trying to get the first two-hundred-and-fifty, and then we'll, I think, I think the district would match that. And that's the next step. Trying to work through that while there's, while the administration's favorable in, in some of those issues, so. As far as, one other thing Paul talked to me about was, they're, they're metering all of the recharge areas, and that's something that the district could, you know, eventually consult with Peril. And as you guys start doing some recharge projects, we've started metering those in the Cedar Basin, so that we know what's, like, for instance, there's a gravel pit right there by Western Rock, or not Western Rock, I'm sorry, Metalcraft and Horse Alley. So, all the drainage from Three Hundred West in Cedar City West goes down by Mr. Bubbles and drops down into that, that gravel pit. It drops in, and then what, what doesn't recharge goes out, the spillway, and out to Quichapaw, recharge out there. So, the district has put in a meter going in and one going out, so it measures how much water goes in the ground. And we're actually looking at a SCADA system that will be direct, you know, real-time of all the recharge systems in the valleys, so that at any given time, you can know what's going in the ground. And we can report that to the state engineer. And the more we can, the more recharge projects we can get going, the further that delays that groundwater management plan from being implemented on an aggressive scale. So, it's gonna be, so that's what they're, they're working on there, yeah.
Do you have open wears, or is it actually, or do you actually meter that dirty water through a regular meter?
It's not a meter. It doesn't go through a meter. There's some kind of a device that just goes in the stream and it measures it. It just, it somehow measures the flow. I don't, I don't understand the science behind it, but, but they work. And, so it doesn't have, actually have to go through a pipe or, or a weir, it just, it just measures the flow, and so...
Interesting. So, where's that gravel pit there near Mr. Bubbles exactly? Is it...
So, right, you know the new locksmith on Fifty-Six, that new shop?
Oh, down beyond the auction?
So, yeah, down past the auction, there's a, there's a church right there, and then there's a new locksmith, and then you have Metalcraft. So, just across the railroad tracks, they've taken a lot of material out, created a huge gravel pit. They're taking that material over, and they're gonna use it on the runway reach construction, where they're, they're raising that north end of the runway up. They're gonna use that material for that. So, it's a win-win. They, they're taking material out of there, it's creating a, a place where we can recharge. And then the other, the other exciting thing is, as you know, Alma, the county's harvested about fifty thousand yards of gravel out of that Quichapaw Creek, where we traded with the Cedar City on that property, that seven and a half acres. And I actually talked to Steve Platt about possibly, I spent some time with John Whitaker looking at other properties the county owns in Cedar City. If we could, if we could possibly work out a deal with Cedar City, I talked to the mayor and Paul Bittman last week. If we could work out a deal to trade maybe a little more land and get another piece of, of property out there, we could start another pit and start recharging in that one sooner, if it worked. And, and Steve thought that might be a good option. If not, we could, if not, if that doesn't work, we could take some of that pit run and stockpile it. And Cedar City said we could stockpile it on their property. We'd be okay to do that, too. So, just so that we could start putting that Quichapaw Creek water in. That's thirty-eight-hundred acre-feet a year that could possibly go into that pit, solve some of the flooding issues with Sunset Canyon and, and those things, so. But that's an exciting project. I think it's been a win-win for the county and the city, so.
Do you have any other items? Commissioner?
I don't.
Well, we've all been monitoring the legislature carefully, and we were all three up there this last week. So, interesting to see. We were able, Commissioner Cousins and I were able to talk to Senator Vickers, and he said that the secondary irrigation bill to make them mo, or meter their water, it looks like they're going to exclude the rural areas like ours, Peril and Paragona, some, they all have them. And hopefully, they, they won't have to put on those expensive meters. That's something that's more geared to the Wasatch Front where the water's, where there's a lot more people and, and they've got to watch every bit, but, or every, every drop. But, not that we don't do that here, but we're just not to that point of needing to install those meters. So, it looks like that's gonna come out, turn out okay. And anyway, there's a lot of things that we're monitoring. So, if there's anything from you folks out there, you know, that you need us to help you with, let us, you know, we all need to watch the legislature regarding our own departments, because crazy things can happen. And so, special interest groups and so on come in and can cause us a lot of problems, so. John, do you have anything?
No. Our, our affiliate group worked with, and I can't remember the senator's name, but on the one bill about converting some of these positions to appointed versus elected. And I believe they pulled that one, so.
It has been pulled?
I believe so. Is that correct, Cindy? Do you know? Yeah, I think, I think they pulled it.
Is that the bill that Carbon was running, or trying to run?
Yeah.
Kendra?
Uh-huh.
Was that the bill she was pushing?
Mike, do you have anything?
I do not.
Let's see, what else? We all go out and shovel a little snow for a few minutes?
Shovel some snow for a minute? Done a bit of that, yeah. For taking orders, huh? Oh, that's right. Now, we, we had an agenda item for her, but, but if you would like, it practically is probably more appropriate here. So, what we're referring to there is item number two. And we weren't sure whether that wanted to be part of the departmental reports, but maybe if we've got time now, Commissioner, I don't know how you'd feel, we'd actually put Breonna Garrett on to, during the public appointments, but if you're comfortable with that, if you feel like we're on good legal ground to have her come and visit with us at this point, Mike, I think that might, would be appropriate.
Okay, excellent. Breonna, glad to have you with us today, and let's do that right now. That would be great.
Thank you.
How can I get my computer back up?
I just wanted to come and give a little bit of an update for our program, the victim advocate services that are in Iron County Sheriff's Department, along with the Cedar City Police Department. So, we, I was hired about three months ago, and then Elizabeth Soriano is the advocate in the police department, Cedar City Police Department. And she was hired about two months ago, so this is really like two to three months' progress. But in the last three months, we've served a hundred and eight victims of various crimes. And we've been able to update the soft rooms through the VOCA grant that Stephanie worked so hard to get us. And we've also created domestic violence brochures, along with general victim services brochures, for law enforcement agents to give out to victims. And in these brochures, it has different, like, resources for them, different places they can call, things that they can do to get help for whatever their situation might be. Liz is also bilingual, and so she was able to help for people with limited English proficiency. So, that's kind of a cool thing that she's able to offer that wasn't previously offered. And then, just on a side thing that I am passionate about, I'm passionate about suicide prevention. So, I was able to get in some, a trainer to train the deputies in the Sheriff's Department on suicide prevention. So, we have fifty officers that were trained on that. And then we're also gonna probably be training Peril and Police Department and ENIC. And then I'll be offering to set something up for Cedar City Police Department also, because that's a big thing in this community. Yeah. Do you guys have any questions for me?
No, I've got a comment, though. Having spent the last twenty-three, twenty-four years at the Cedar City Police Department, I, I'm very excited for this program. And, I mean, this is gonna be so beneficial, not only for victims, but to take some of that workload and some of that stress off the officers, I think it's awesome. So, I'm, I am glad to see you guys up and running. I had no doubt that it wouldn't be awesome and get off the ground and be great, so.
Yeah, that's one of the...
Thank you for your hard work.
One of the things we've been trying to do, too, is find out how we can fit in and help each department, because they all function a little bit differently, you know, and have different needs. So, trying to establish relationships with all of the officers and figure out where we can best be utilized.
Okay, excellent. So glad to have that in our community. It seems like we arrest people and put them in jail, and then sometimes we forget about the victims, and so, it's so important. Thank you for, Stephanie, for working with that and getting the grant. So, we, we're glad to have you. Wish you well in your future and going forward with your endeavors.
Cool. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your report. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, let's take a break now and then try to get back here and get started right at ten, and...
Yeah, we're going Commissioner.
Okay, welcome back everyone. This time we will do item number one, public comments. Three minute limit. Is there anyone that has any comments for the public? Scene nine, we'll move to item three. We've already taken care of item two. Discussion and possible approval of a grant and agreement award for the Natural Resources Conservation Service. Presented by Dan Jessen, Iron County Auditor. Good morning Dan.
Morning. I was hoping my name wasn't gonna be on this. But I was kind of insisting that it go on the agenda as a really a formality. And I know the commissioners were involved in this. I was kinda surprised the other day when we got bills for a grant that I didn't know anything about and and we don't have anything in the budget for. And anyways, it's 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 fine. I know that Steve had been working long and hard on getting these NRCS monies for the for the watershed in the Parowan Valley. This specific grant is for Paragona. And we just need to go through the formal process of making sure that it's agreed upon. We will have to do some budget adjustments for this, which we'll do at mid-year. So I guess more than anything, just wanted to formally have this on the agenda. I believe Steve already signed it on January fifteenth, but what it is, is the total grant is a million seventy-three thousand hundred and nineteen dollars. Of that, two hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-two is Iron County match. And eight hundred and twenty-three thousand five fifty-seven is the federal funds that will be awarded. That's through US Department of Agriculture and NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation Services. It has a constr- of that eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand is construction. And seven seventy-four thousand and change is what they call the FA. No, the TA, the technical aspect of it, which will go towards engineering. In talking with Steve on this, he's hoping of course that we can come up with all of our match with in-kind materials, labor and so forth. But he's not as confident that we'll be able to cover the entire amount with those indirect costs. And he will remind you that on the last two that we did, the big Parowan Valley one. And I think it's just that one, because the other one is was all engineering. There was they're not exactly moneymakers, but we had more cash in than direct cash out. Once you factor all of the costs of the project, labor that we paid our guys, equipment, gravel we pulled out of the ground. You know, we we have paid for that, but we do still have extra cash from that. So even if this project uses a little bit of cash, we're we'll still be net to the good. Anyways, entertain any questions, even though it's not really my my project. We'll need to do budget adjustments on it when the time comes.
Questions, comments?
I just I just didn't wanna be start spending any money on something that is not even officially approved by in the commission and nor is it anywhere in the budget.
Well, sorry that didn't get into the budget.
Well, and if you remember my budget, in my budget presentation, I mentioned that we were going after grants. So we we talked about it. We just didn't have the numbers until it kind of was formalized there in the first of January, so.
Right. And this is part of the seventeen million. Well, no, this is EWP. We've only received five hundred thousand of the of the requested seventeen million, and that's for engineering. And a lot of that engineering has been accomplished and hopefully over a period of years, we'll get that whole seventeen million to to repair and and armor the all the the drainages involved with the Bryanhead Fire Scar, so.
Yes, technically you're right. This is the project title of this grant is Iron County hyphen Bryanhead Fire Paragona EWP.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
I would move, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the grant agreement award for the Natural Resource Conservation Service. I did not catch the full amount.
One million seventy-three, one nineteen.
One million seventy-three dollars. One million, one million seventy-three.
Thousand.
Thousand nineteen. I told you earlier, I struggled with numbers. With that, the the suspected match for Iron County would be two hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars, which we'll we'll try to accomplish an in-kind match.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve a grant, an agreement award for Natural Resources Conservation Service for the Paragona EWP project with an amount of one million seventy-three thousand one nineteen. With two hundred and forty-nine thousand five sixty-two of that being non-federal funds, our match, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand five fifty-seven being the federal funds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. You got here just in time for the vote, Steve. Thank you, appreciate that. So, do you wanna give us a just a short rundown of what the project will actually be? Out there at Paragona?
I would be happy to Commissioner. You know the dollar amounts. The actual construction, there's a box culvert. If you start at the mouth of Little Creek Canyon, go up canyon about two miles, there's a box culvert. We need to do a little repair on that, put riprap above it and below it. Then the most of the work is gonna be done right there at the mouth of the canyon where we've traditionally had a crossing. Every winter it ices up, so we're trying to make a a better culvert, bigger culvert for that. And then there's a diversion structure there that takes about eight irrigation companies lines that needs some attention. The NRCS is very conscientious about maintaining those diversion structures. Excuse me, I shouldn't still have my hat on. And then we wanna start a detention basin. This much money won't give us enough to do all that we want to do. But we have more coming with the Parowan Basin operations wide. So that's basically where the money's gonna be spent. The way the county will make our match is with riprap from the landfill provided for the project and maybe Curtis can actually do some of the work. I'm hoping that'll be the case. We did, you know, I gave you a Christmas present. About a hundred and ninety-five thousand that we made on the Parowan EWP. I hope I don't have to use any of that cash for this match. I hope we can do it with all our machinery and labor. But that's it. Questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Hey, item number four, discussion and possible approval for GIS software, proposed unlimited user license for Esri. Jared Wilton, IT Director, welcome again Jared.
Thank you. So yeah, the proposal is is to is to move to an unlimited license. The benefits of of going to the unlimited license, it'll be a three-year ordeal on this. There's just kind of where we're at and where where it can go to. Right now, we've got five licenses. Got about a fourteen thousand yearly maintenance on that. If we go to the unlimited ones, we'll, of course, we have the budget already in for this year, the fourteen thousand. But next year, we'll see the increase to twenty-three, five, and then the following year to thirty-five. It gives us all the extensions, all the GIS pro licenses we want. And then, of course, if we don't go this route, the Recorder's Office is gonna need to move to it sooner than later. And so we're looking, if we don't go this route and get the unlimited licenses, then down the road, it's gonna cost us nine thousand per license. The Recorder's Office currently has five users that would use it with the potential of growth for more users, so. So you can see the dollar amount on there could be hefty as we get them onboard. And then also too, this is our time to jump, just based on our population as a county. That's how Esri does their criteria for this unlimited license. And come next year, our population will be over the amount and that'll make it jump from thirty-five thousand a year to fifty. So if we get in right now, we can get grandfathered in. We don't have to see that jump of fifteen grand.
So is this just for three years or does it?
Well, it'll it'll be ongoing.
Ongoing, but it's this is for the three years.
Yeah, this this agreement that you'd sign is a three-year agreement, and then after that, it becomes a year-to-year agreement of the thirty-five thousand.
And the total's seventy-two, two twenty-four?
So and and then some of the things too that you haven't noticed on on there is is once we get the Recorder's Office off, there's about six thousand dollars in AutoCAD maintenance that will come off the books that can go towards that. And then there's also an I-Works one that the the Roads Department, and that's about twelve hundred dollars that'll come off the books and can go towards that. So we're looking at about seventy-two hundred dollars that can go from one to the other in that transition as well, so.
For those two departments, is there is there a lot of setup when you switch over? I mean, is it is it, it's not just totally new?
The Recorder's Office, yes.
Recorder's Office, yeah.
Totally new.
They can handle it.
Totally new for the Recorder's Office, but the the Road Department, they're yeah, they're they're totally fine. In fact, they kinda utilize it, but they, because we don't have all the extensions, they can't utilize all of it. So add on to them. The Assessor's Office, they run pictometry in that with this Esri stuff. We now have licenses for all them. We could put it put it on every one of their desktops and they can run pictometry with with the parcels and everything else a lot, a lot more efficiently. And then it also seamlessly integrates too with their realware software right now. And I believe the new Puma coming up is also Esri-based as well.
What Puma?
Puma is the new appraisal software that the state's working on, MCAT's working on, so. So there's a lot of seamless integration that'll go with it. The Building Department will, they can benefit on it right away. I could see, well, Reed Erickson inside there, he'll benefit right away from it. And then there's others that can just start adding and use it as as they see a need for it, so. So now's the time to jump. I mean, right now, yes, it will increase the budget. But in the long run, I believe that it will decrease the the cost to the county. If we wait, then we'll we'll see a larger, larger cost, so. Good stuff.
Any questions, comments?
No, I think I've had plenty of discussion. I I get it.
Oh, it's one other thing too, and it might be good for Kerry to hear this as well, but part of this comes with an e-learning center too. It's unlimited users. And you get on Esri's thing, usually they charge for that, but it comes as part of it. So you can get training on any aspect you want. And it's at your pace training, so it shouldn't require overtime to get up to speed and all that stuff.
After you've been in there three times, they don't all of a sudden say we're gonna charge you a hundred bucks or whatever. So that's good.
And that'll go for anybody that wants to to utilize the software. And of course, we'll train them from our office as well, but they can get some more in-depth training on specific items as they need it, so.
So Jared, I have a question. Currently, don't you hire, or I don't know, hire, but you need an outside company to update those at GIS? So eventually, if my office goes to a
Correct. So yeah, right now, we're spending about nine thousand a year right now with, well, it's bounced. It used to be SUU, but now we're using Sunrise Engineering and they're doing the parcel stuff, so. So that could be a potential savings down the road once Kerry's office does it all.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
There's no other discussion. I would entertain a motion.
I'll, Mr. Chair, I'll move to purchase and make an agreement with Esri for the G new GIS software. The total cost of seventy-two thousand two twenty-four for three years with the understanding that it'll continue on after that.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we do approve the purchase of GIS software from Esri with the total amount of seventy-two thousand two hundred, hundred twenty, two hundred and twenty-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you all. Item five, re-review of proposal and possible approval of contractor to clean, sand, prep, and recote the hardwood floor in the Iron County Visitor Center. And we haven't got anybody from the Building Department to speak to that.
I don't even know. Let me see what I've got on it.
I was over there and talked to Lester about it, that they needed to do it. Was there a, was there an agenda item on there, on the packet? With that proposal?
Let's see, there's Esri.
Sometimes people have them with them and it looks like all we've got is the request.
So no, okay.
We don't have any, we don't, do we have a proposal?
Oh, here's from Lester. Just, well, it's just the agenda request, yeah, like John said, so yeah, there's no, there's nothing with it.
I talked to Chad earlier today. They were right in the middle of snow removal, but he he indicated if I'm, that he thought Lester or Reed may be here to address that.
Okay, well, let's put that on hold then and come back to it. Hopefully, they'll be here before long if they can get the snow moved. Okay, personnel. Betsy, are you here today for that? Welcome. Good morning.
We have two things on the agenda today for the Roads Department. A request to promote John Williams and Justin Goodwin to lead maintenance workers. We did hold an internal posting and interviewing process, and these were the two individuals that were chosen to move forward with that.
Both have been with us for a long time. They're excellent employees, by the way. Any questions or discussion? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve, can we do these together?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Move to approve the the promotion of John Williams as well as Justin Goodwin to a lead roads maintenance worker. And with that corresponding five percent increase for each of them.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the promotion of John Williams and Justin Goodwin from road maintenance worker to lead roads maintenance worker with the corresponding five percent pay increase, effective one twenty-seven, two thousand nineteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Lester, I was just texting you. I didn't even get a chance to hit sand before you came running through the door.
That's because I was coming through the door about seven.
Okay, since Lester's here, we'll return to item five.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
The snow kinda threw me off this morning.
Yeah.
I also made it so I didn't have any paperwork for you, but we actually only had one bidder for the flooring, for the floor of the Visitor Center. Not actually that surprised. That's one reason I have to go through the RFP method, because I can't get three competitive bids, but it was posted and all the legal realities were followed, so. But the Shakespeare Flooring submitted a bid for five thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. And that's to sand the floor completely down, fill all the cracks, fill all the holes. And then the method that they're gonna use is a two-part, actually a three-part epoxy-type flooring. It's what they're using on all the gym floors now. Supposed to be quite, quite a nice process and it has a shorter curing time than what we've been using before, so. Hopefully, we can keep them, get their back in there sooner and I'm hoping with the harder surface, it may last longer.
Does it have less smell to it also?
Yes, actually, it actually does have a whole lot less smell, because we're going from, before, we were actually using an oil-based. And as your cousins can attest, oil-based stuff has a whole lot more smell to it, and this actually is a water-based. That, yeah, but it has, then it has the hardening agent in it, so.
Seems counterintuitive, but I did the same thing with my log home. If I can oil forever, I finally got rid of that and put water base on, way better. It's just a better product, so. Okay, any discussion, questions?
No.
I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to accept the bid from Shakespeare Flooring in the amount of five thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars to clean, sand, prep, and recote the hardwood floor in the Iron County Visitor Center.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we award the bid to Shakespeare, what's the full name, Flooring?
Shakespeare Flooring. Shakespeare hardwood flooring, I believe.
Shakespeare hardwood flooring. To clean, sand, prep, and recote the hardwood floor in the Iron County Visitor Center. Cost fifty-nine ninety-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Yes. Yes, you may.
I can learn to understand you much better if I can get familiar with the way you talk. I need your permission to help.
It's just that with the snow and the ice, we're tracking in so much junk and those the halls look bad and they're gonna get all scratched up and we just spent a ton of money and even in all the I know when we've talked before, they don't have much of a budget, so they only vacuum maybe, but so we, we've been doing our own, but it's just
The hallway should actually be getting done daily. And I actually just purchased a machine to make it easier for them to do that. I don't have it fully set up yet. They're waiting for for me.
Last week or last storm, it was really bad and and then the salt coming in on all of our carpets was tracked in and like I said, we, I know at least the three of us vacuum our own offices quite frequently, but the I don't know. I don't wanna nail that. I don't wanna get upset with them, because I know that they bid.
Well, and how how it works, Reed was here, he he wrote it, so he's a lot clearer on it than I am, but high-traffic areas, hallways, those areas, they're supposed to be cleaned daily. And then also your office areas, high, high-traffic is is daily, then they have to vacuum the whole office at least once a week or as needed, as it's written. So if they walk in and it's dirty, they should be vacuuming it. So it, you know, you know, this time of year, they know they're going to have to vacuum more often and Matt's really easy to work with and I can just say, hey, we've noticed a lot more salt being tracked in. Can you make sure you hit that with the vacuum?
And you mentioned your new machine. What was, what does it still lack?
That piece in your, that's sitting in your office?
Oh, yay. The one that's in the box?
The one in the box.
Okay, very good.
It's the chemical dispenser to run the machine.
Okay.
We got an auto buffer scrubber. We got one last year for the Public Safety Building and absolutely loved it. And so we got one for this building and it's, all they have to do is walk behind it and it scrubs and then vacuums up all the mess right behind them. And so it should keep these floors nice and shiny and it's, you can clean the floors as fast as you can walk, so.
That's good.
Hopefully, yeah.
Well, it sounds like we're covered with our contract, so.
Yeah, we're covered with our contract. We just need to let them know.
Okay. Who's doing our snow removal?
It's contracted with Dave Harris. I don't know his snow moving company name, but Dave Harris is on it. And how that works is they don't deploy until there's two inches of snow on it, and then then they deploy and then every two inches after that. But we we are charged per trip. That's one nice thing with John, and I know Bart helps from the Recorder's Office, and I don't know who else helps in the building, but that little bit of you guys pushing that does save us quite a bit, because just this building alone, each trip he deploys is close to four hundred dollars. And that's why, Nate's out there right now with the snow blower and everything, just getting everything cleaned up a little better and.
Okay, good, 'cause I I don't wanna be nitpicky on a big storm day, but there was some stuff, you know, right in front of the door, so that's the stuff that gets tracked in, you know? And sometimes it's hard to get the, I definitely didn't get my show.
What we've been doing is they'll come through and and clean it, and they do an okay job, and then myself, Nate, Chad will help out, and Terry actually will help out from time to time as needed. We'll actually go behind them and do that spot cleaning. But, you know, we cover a lot of buildings and so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that north side has to be nearly perfect.
Yeah, and so that's where I had Nate get the snow blower out there and he's redoing that whole side and then we'll salt it and trying to make it so, yeah, like I said, I got out of the truck and just about went down. I've been salting out and around.
Okay, thanks for your efforts. We appreciate it. It's gonna be an interesting winter. It already has been. We're thankful for the moisture. Okay, we have item number seven is a strategy session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property. Most likely going into a closed session, so let's just do non-delegated at this time and then go back to that one. Are there any prairie dog matters?
Happily no.
They're all buried under the snow. County boards, any updates?
No, the two except, I did, I didn't wanna, I I'd kinda mentioned this before, but maybe a little more pointedly. Had those individuals express interest in serving on a board. And I would kinda like to write them some kind of a letter acknowledging, because we haven't really done that, just acknowledging their interest and thanking them. Would you be okay if I did that, Commissioners?
Sure.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
I'll do it.
Okay, well, we don't have the list of county boards, but the Water Conservancy is staff, but we have some that are up for reappointment, correct? Is that where we are on that?
Yeah, two up for reappointment and then one from Cedar City that's been recommended to replace me.
Okay, so who did they recommend?
Terry Hartley.
Okay, oh, yeah, that's right, okay. Well, I would be fine with going forward with that appointment today, if, or at least discussion with Terry.
No, I, that's, I would be fine with approving that, that's.
I think, I actually think Terry'd be awesome on that board moving forward with her with her banking background and and the financing we're gonna have to procure for the West Desert projects. I think she'd be good.
I do too. Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would move the approval of Terry Hartley as a board member of the Iron County Central Water Conservancy District.
Central Iron County Water Conservancy District. Sorry.
I have a, well, I have a mental block. I struggle with that one every single time. So the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District.
Quite the acronym as well, so.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we appoint Terry Hartley of the Cedar City Council to be a member of the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, and well, let's be thinking about those two reappointments. Hopefully, get that taken care of. Well, I shouldn't say automatic reappointment. I mean, reappointment or or replace those folks, but hopefully, we have that ready by our upcoming meeting, so. Okay, anything on the courthouse?
We covered it. If when we do the reconstruction, could we put some heat in the north stairs?
When we do the reconstruction?
I'm here for you. Well, that's actually a good point. I I wonder if in maybe future budgets or at some point, we, the the stairs where we've taken the doors off to the hallways, there, everything's kind of exposed and the landings. Are we talking about the same thing?
Yes.
Okay. Anyway, it would be great to have a project where we replace the the tile or the floor covering on there. There was, at one point, it looked like somebody had stood in some acid and walked down the south stairwell and you can kinda see every, and they've tried everything conceivable to clean it, but it etched the plastic, and so you can see these boot footprints going down and, but anyway, and some of them are bare and and some of them are just remnant carpet pieces that are floating around. I mean, it would be great to kind of finish that off.
Maybe put on RFP for the, for that new, that really, what is that product? Is that more rubbery type tread? What do they call that?
We'll go with a rubber tread. I don't know what it's quite, what it.
It's got the the round bumps and.
That's what we'll do. I can price it out. I don't know if I have a budget for it this year, but if I don't, we can budget it next year.
It's just a real eyesore. It's just
It's funny, 'cause yeah, it's it's such a contrast, yeah.
Okay. Well, yeah, you just already said it. If you'll just see if you can fit it into the budget. If not, then let's get it done next year. Okay. Well, yeah, you just already said it. If you'll just see if you can fit it into the budget. If not, then let's get it done next year.
Funny indentions are in, in front of each door. Um, I'm gonna have the indoor-outdoor walk-off carpet go back in, into those permanently. So you don't have that funny lip and also it will help
And on the south one, whenever there's a storm, the, the rug that's there usually ends up.
Yeah, I saw, it, it's over there.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's bucked me for a while, so.
Thank you. Okay, the reason courthouse is on here is because of the remodel. So is there any item regarding the remodel that is still open?
No, the, the remodel's actually been officially closed.
Okay.
Everything else will just be, Andrew, I'll do an RFP and do it just like I did the visitor center.
Shall I take it off?
So let's, unless anybody objects, let's take courthouse off of the non-delegated and say a big hallelujah that the project's completed. All right, uh, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to move out of this open s- public meeting to the closed session to discuss the the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property.
Second.
Ben moved in seconded that we move into a strategy session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property. Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Hey, well, public, that, we're not adjourned, but that's, uh, that's our last public item or before that, so.
Yeah, in fact, to make, to, to take an action, they have to come back into the public, yeah, so.
Well, we may. It depends, uh, it depends on our discussion. We may or may not take action today. We may choose to not take action on, on this item. We have a couple items actually, so, that are both real estate. Centered, so. Okay, thank you. You wanna try to just have it in here, John, or move back?
Whatever you'd rather.
Well, the, we better move back there, I guess, cause if any publics want to stay in here. So we'll move back into the room behind.
Okay, Commissioner.
Thank you. The Chair declares the County Commission back in session after our closed session. We actually discussed two different real estate situations and made no final decision on either one of those, so there will be further discussion. If there's no other discussion for Commission meeting, I would entertain a motion. No, I'll just declare. Is there any other discussion on anything for regular Commission meeting?
No.
Okay. Chair declares the Orange County Commission meeting adjourned. Thank you all.